Oh, boy, every year.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, I'm glad.
Yeah. Well, I think that's what threw me is just the COVID stuff. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
I will be there next year with Bell's. Now, that I would buy the tickets to go see Sharon and Bell. Me too.
Johnson, do you have a report tonight?
It's very short, just a couple of reminders on knowing that it's the reports in a funny order because of the presentations that are in front of you.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, but they're important reminders.
And obviously, since I missed the conference, I need to be reminded since. Well, two Mondays off just threw me, I'll tell you, that just. I didn't know what day it was, I didn't know.
It was a blessing, you know?
Yeah, it was. Star Rock, yeah, but then I insisted one time it was Saturday and it wasn't, it was Friday. I messed myself up.
We need to have that Monday meeting to keep ourselves grounded as to what day it really is.
Exactly, yeah, you're gonna have trouble, aren't you, Karen, here pretty soon? No?
I think my calendar works just fine to tell me what day it is.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, there you go, Barbara. Hello, here's Mr. Skilling, hello, his friends.
Dave, do you have sound yet? Can you talk? Uh, you're, you're not muted either.
Oh, no.
Sharon, if you don't have the voice, can somebody do this?
I don't have, I don't have him in front of me and I don't have
No, I'll send him, I'll send him right now.
Well, that doesn't matter, because I don't have the other. I just have my iPad tonight. Is that what you're asking?
Mr. Mayor, there's just one motion for consent agenda tonight, I believe.
Well.
If someone could just send me the text up, did it just, I can, I can probably
Yep, I'll send it to you right now, Barb.
Okay, sorry about that, but I'll second.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Remy, how are you?
I'm real good, thank you, and how are you?
I'm fantastic.
Feeling better?
By the, by the way, it was not COVID, everybody should know that, it wasn't COVID, it was just a nasty cold of some sort, so all is well, I'm fine, family's all good.
We've got two minutes.
Okay, two minutes. Barb, did those come through? One minute. You're on mute now, Barb.
That's a Word document attachment, right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna print it out now, so yeah, I'll be good.
Do the one, just, it's just the one motion, the others are the script. Please, and thank you. Dave's calling me. Yes, sir.
Hello, my.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council Virtual Meeting, Lakewood, Colorado, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. The phone number for tonight's public comment opportunity is one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight with a webinar ID of nine eight two four one eight one two seven one three pound. You'll press pound one more time to be into the meeting and then to join and then star nine to request to speak, star six to unmute. If you do wish to do general public comment and you're on with us right now, please feel free to raise your hand, star nine, and we can make sure that you are in the queue. Mayor Protem Skilling was having some issues and he may be switching out and coming back in with us here in a little bit. And as just a quick item, housekeeping note on the agenda, item nine or item eight has been pulled. Item eight has been pulled off the consent agenda and that is approving the Alameda Corridor Business Improvement District Bid twenty twenty-two Operating Plan. There was an issue in regards to some of the info submitted that needs to go back to their board and then resubmitted to the council. So item eight will be removed from the consent agenda, so our motion maker when we get there will make a motion to approve the consent minus item eight. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll? Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Bida.
Here.
Skilling. I'm sure she'll be back, uh, Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I am here.
LeBure.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
And we have a quorum. Thank you very much, I now ask that you please rise if you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer and certainly challenging weekend and remember those that were lost in nine eleven on the twentieth anniversary, so if you please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, dear God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so our next two items, items four and five are presentations, both having to do with sustainability. So I will now open up item four and I will turn this over to Christie Saroni, who is a sustainability planner. And I remind folks that this presentation was also on Lakewood Speaks and will make note that Mayor Protem Skilling is with us and gave us the thumbs up. Good evening, Ms. Saroni, nice to see you.
Hi, good to see you too, can you hear me? Okay, good. I will, I'm gonna share my presentation. Share, I'm looking for the correct button, here we go. Let's see, okay, so can everyone see the PowerPoint presentation? Okay, thank you. Hello, Mayor Paul and city council members, and we also invited the Sustainable Neighborhood Leaders to join us tonight. So hello to the neighborhood leaders who are listening in with us tonight. My name is Christie Saroni and I am the new coordinator for Lakewood Sustainable Neighborhoods Program. I started in this position this past April, before that, I had become familiar with the program first as a volunteer in my own neighborhood, Southern Gables, which is one of Lakewood Sustainable Neighborhoods, and then by working for a few hours a week with my predecessor Alyssa Vogan for the past four and a half years. When she moved on to a new job this spring, I was glad to be able to move into this position and get to work even more closely with the Sustainable Neighborhoods. Today, I'm going to share with you some recognition and updates about our newest Sustainable Neighborhoods as well as some updates from our continuing Sustainable Neighborhoods. I will share some trends and themes that we're seeing emerge in the initiatives that our volunteer leaders are bringing forward. Every year, the innovative solutions that the neighborhood leaders are working on help teach us what is important to residents in Lakewood, and we're excited to be able to share these observations with you too. I know that many of you are familiar with the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, but in case we have some listeners who are new to hearing about the program, I'll share some basics just to begin. The Sustainable Neighborhoods Program is made up of neighborhoods who applied for and were selected to be part of the program, volunteer leaders from the neighborhoods plan and host workshops, events, clubs, and complete projects that advance sustainability. The neighborhoods earn credits for their work and each year can achieve certification as an outstanding or participating Sustainable Neighborhood. The Sustainable Neighborhoods Program is the foundation of the Sustainability Division and in fact predates the formation of the Sustainability Plan and the Sustainability Division. All of the great work that we've accomplished stems from this beginning. During adoption of the Sustainability Plan in twenty fifteen, city council established a goal of having twelve Sustainable Neighborhoods in the program by twenty twenty-five. We are on track to meet that goal with ten neighborhoods in the program now, and here are the Sustainable Neighborhoods in the program now. Starting in the north, we have Applewood, Morse Park, Iber, south of six, Oakane Park, Weir Gulch Gardens, Belmar, Southern Gables, Lake Lockwood Village, and Green Mountain. We're so pleased to welcome our two newest neighborhoods, Oakane Park and Weir Gulch Gardens. Parks, Oakane Park, and Lakewood's Washington Heights Art Center, the group has called itself Sustain Oakane. Projects that Sustain Oakane leaders have coordinated include a neighborhood history inherited webinar, curbside composting pilot project, Earth Day sign distribution distributing over fifty Earth Day sign, yard signs to neighbors, a neighborhood bike club with monthly rides to places throughout the neighborhood, helping neighbors find safe routes to school and work and play, a zirik garden tour, and much more. So I want to say congratulations to Sustain Oakane for a great first year in the program and their up and coming certification as an outstanding Sustainable Neighborhood. Weir Gulch Gardens is our second new, our other new Sustainable Neighborhood this year. And they are the neighborhood area bordered by Alameda on the north, Sheridan on the east, Mississippi on the south, and Wadsworth and Pierce on the west, moving around the Belmar area. The area encompasses many landmarks, just a few of which include Ray Ross Park, the Eaton Senior Communities, Dean Elementary School, and Angelica Village. All projects that the Weir Gulch Gardens leaders have coordinated include a Compost Buddies, which is a program to match up neighbors who don't have space for backyard composting with neighbors who do have space for backyard composting and can accept some extra compost from their neighbors. They've also done composting workshops and a composting pilot project, a curbside composting pilot project. They coordinated a food drive for the Action Center, they've done a number of community cleanup days, a seed and seedling swap, and much, much more. So congratulations to Weir Gulch Gardens for a great first year in the program and their up and coming certification as an outstanding Sustainable Neighborhood. As mentioned before, in addition to our two new neighborhoods, we have eight more Sustainable Neighborhoods who continue to do great work in their neighborhoods and who found new and innovative, innovative ways to engage neighbors during the pandemic. The past year and a half has proven to us over and over again the adaptability of this program. We are reminded during challenging times about the importance of creating resilient communities, and the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program is one tool that has proven its ability to achieve this. Here are a few numbers to illustrate the great things that our two soon-to-be-certified outstanding neighborhoods and eight continuing neighborhoods have accomplished in the certification year from June twenty twenty through May twenty twenty-one, that's when they have their anniversaries. So during that time, volunteers coordinated seventy-three workshops, clubs, projects, and special events, and they engaged at least five thousand six hundred forty-eight residents in these initiatives. Just a few of the examples of some of those workshops and initiatives and club meetings. And some of the results of those are that one hundred forty-two thousand two hundred eighty-nine pounds of paint was collected at three different paint recycling events and repurposed instead of being sent to the landfill. Six of our neighborhoods have community gardens where food is grown and relationships are built with schools and neighborhood associations and community members. Over two hundred new trees were planted in Morse Park in their tree planting initiative. Over four hundred and thirty Be Safe pledges have been signed and Be Safe signs have been distributed to people who have pledged not to use pesticides that are harmful to pollinators. And the curbside composting pilot projects that I mentioned with Weir Gulch Gardens and Oakane Park have expanded to four additional Lakewood neighborhoods with sixty-eight participants in Lakewood. Again, these are just a few of the many, many examples of the programs that the neighborhoods have coordinated. These numbers bring the total number over the nine years of the Sustainable Neighborhood Program to eight hundred and seventeen initiatives with over thirty-three thousand participants engaged during that time. As mentioned, the people who make this all happen are volunteers who live in the neighborhoods. We're so proud and fortunate to get to work with such amazing volunteers. All of them are unique, but what they all have in common is a passion about sustainability topics, persistence and creativity and nimbleness to do things in new ways, especially as we mentioned during the pandemic. And it all results in a huge volume of productivity, as you can see in the previous slide, with the numbers of initiatives and the numbers of Lakewood residents that they have reached and engaged. As we reviewed the information from the past year of projects and initiatives, we noticed some themes emerging that we want to share with you because we believe they're indicators of what is important to Lakewood residents. One theme is in the topics that neighborhoods are frequently addressing, and a second theme is in the common methods that they are using in approaching these topics. So first, the topics that neighborhoods are working on, we found three topic areas that engaged, that they had a large number of initiatives. The first is gardening, low water and natural landscaping landscapes, and supporting pollinators with twenty-nine events and initiatives over the year. The second area is community support and engagement with twenty-two events and initiatives over the year, and a third area is waste reduction, in particular efforts focused on composting. And there were twelve initiatives and events in that area. Other topics included biking, working with school partners, energy conservation, neighborhood history, working to end racism, and, and of course, many, many other topics. A second layer to the themes that we're seeing across all of the topics is in how neighborhoods are approaching the topics they address. So regardless of the topic, we're seeing that our neighborhood leaders want to, one, work with partners like schools, local businesses, and charitable organizations, two, work on more and more longer-term projects in addition to one-time workshops and events, three, working to address diversity, equity, and inclusion in their work. For example, we've had a number of requests to translate materials into multiple languages, as well as we've had a lot of conversations with neighbors, neighbors looking for ways to ensure equitable access to events and resources. And then four, again, as we've mentioned, finding ways to be nimble and adaptable in responding to changing times. Shifting gears, oh, this is making, I don't know why.
Did we lose you, Ms. Saroni? No.
Um, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Could you hear that, there was a recording that was at the same time?
Huh.
Could you hear that? I think the recording that I sent earlier was on that, part of it was on that slide. And I'm here, but you're not hearing that?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so let me restart on that slide and I'm gonna see if I can turn off the sound that I'm hearing. Um, oh my goodness. I'm sorry.
You're cool. I think you were, you were at the slide talking about the expansion of the programs with Denver, Fort Collins, and Wheat Ridge.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Expanding to, um, yes, to the other, the other cities. Maybe I'll just say what I was gonna say there and then we can come back and, and skip ahead since it's making noise on this end and I can't talk over it. But the neighbor, the Sustainable Neighborhood Network, um, well, the Sustainable Neighborhood Program started here in Lakewood in twenty twelve, and then in twenty fourteen, Denver adopted the program for its neighborhoods too. And we realized that this would be a model that could be adopted across Colorado and across the country. And so when Denver joined, we developed the Sustainable Neighborhood Network as an umbrella organization for the cities using the program. So now the Sustainable Neighborhood Network has expanded to include four participating cities, Lakewood, Denver, Fort Collins, and then in twenty twenty, Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge joined the network and la- launched there for Sustainable Neighborhoods, and they did it all remotely too because it happened during the pandemic. So we found that we can help other cities launch their programs remotely. And so if cities outside of Colorado want to join the program, we'd be able to do that because we learned that we could do it without being all in the same room together. We continually, continue to regularly receive inquiries from other municipal municipalities about joining the network. And we're excited to announce that we've now established the Sustainable Neighborhood Network as its own nonprofit organization in order to accommodate and facilitate growth and add new member cities, also to help with fundraising for collaborative efforts and support all of the member cities and their staff and volunteers. Okay, so I'm gonna try to restart the presentation or reshare the presentation and go to the next slide. Sorry for the technology problem.
That's okay, and if there are troubles, this is all on Lakewood Speaks also, so folks can tune in, and I certainly know council, all the council watch this on Lakewood Speaks as well, so.
Perfect, yes, so, yeah, so citizens can go and see the whole thing there also, perfect, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna try to reshare. Okay, um, so back to our program here in Lakewood. In conclusion, we often hear from our Sustainable Neighborhood volunteer leaders that what motivates them is being able to make a difference in their neighborhoods and in Lakewood. These volunteer leaders bring their expertise from their professional areas of work, their dedication from personal interests and passions, and their willingness to invest in their communities. They truly do make a difference and we're lucky to work with them, and we feel fortunate to have such a great group of people dedicated to building a stronger, more resilient, and more sustainable Lakewood. Sorry, let me see if I can get to the next slide, I know it's not looking normal here. Um, so thank you for your time today and for your ongoing support and encouragement of the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program. And again, to the neighborhood leaders who are listening in, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, nicely done. No question for me, just, just a comment, you know, this has been one of the most rewarding programs that I've been able to be a part of and seeing how neighborhoods come together and really work together for things that's important to them. It's really ground up, it's not top-down, it's ground up, and that's been amazing to watch, and you know, this was a finalist for a Bloomberg, a Bloomberg Award a couple of years ago. So it's certainly gotten some national recognition as well, which we're also very proud of, so thank you for that wonderful presentation. Counsel, do you have, is there anybody on council that has any questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so much, we appreciate your time and again, your dedication to this. And we'll move into kind of round two, our second presentation, which is the Sustainability Annual Update. I will now turn this over to Mr. Jonathan Watel, our Sustainability Manager, and I think you might have some folks with you as well. For people tuning in, this is also on LakewoodSpeaks.org, it's about a twenty-minute presentation if you'd like to tune in or watch it at a later time as well. So with that, good evening, Mr. Watel, Ms. Long, welcome.
Hi, Mayor, I'm City Council, thank you so much for having us. We're gonna share this presentation tonight in two parts, and to start it off, Caitlin Long, our senior sustainability planner, is gonna give us an overview of where, what we've achieved in the past year and kind of where we are now, and then I will take over and talk a little bit about opportunities in front of us, some of our challenges and opportunities. So with that, I will, Caitlin, take away.
Thank you for that introduction, let me share this. Okay, good evening, Mayor Paul, members of council, and the Lakewood community listening in with us tonight. We are excited to share this year's Sustainability Plan Annual Report with you and some updates on our other priorities going forward. The report is now up online at Lakewood.org/sustainabilityplan, and we also have printed copies available in the office. If any council members would like to receive one, please let us know and I'm happy to get it over to you. As Jonathan said, I am Caitlin Long, I'm a senior sustainability planner in the Sustainability Division. First up, I'll be sharing an overview of the key highlights from the data that we collected this year for the annual report. And then in part two, Sustainability Manager Jonathan Watel will provide a discussion of some challenges and opportunities that we've faced and what our upcoming priorities are heading into next year. So with that, I'll go ahead and kick us off. This year's annual report, as I mentioned, is now up on our website and it includes the full details of all of the metrics that we track in the appendices in the back. These metrics were all adopted as part of the Sustainability Plan in twenty fifteen, following significant public outreach and engagement. It's intended to be a complement to the comprehensive plan as a strategic vision to guide policies and decisions in a way that doesn't compromise the, the priorities of the community, it just gets a little bit farther in detail as we go into that and we, helps us preserve the quality of life for future generations. The underlying premise of sustainability is that we can't just take care of the natural environment or the economy or people. It requires a balance of all three and leveraging each of them for greater benefits to the others. This is called the triple bottom line. And in line with the triple bottom line approach, the Sustainability Plan was organized into topical chapters with many cross-cutting implementation strategies that aim to meet multiple targets from across chapters. So the plan is pretty broad and far-reaching and gives us opportunities to collaborate with many other city departments, community members, partner organizations, and regional entities. We track data in each chapter to give us an indication of whether or not we're moving in the right direction, and we compile that data annually in this annual report. So here we are, six years later, how are we doing? Before we get to the numbers, I wanted to share some highlights of different projects around the city and the community over the last year. First of all, municipal operations have been demonstrating how to be good stewards with limited resources, making responsible use of public funds. Additionally, these projects implemented across multiple departments are examples of investments that may have a greater upfront expense but long-term result in cost savings through lower energy, water, and fuel use. Two other impactful programs at municipal facilities include our Energy Performance Contract, which has enhanced efficiency improvements at our facilities, and our subscription to Renewable Connect, which powers many locations with close to one hundred percent renewable electricity. We're continuing to explore investments in renewables at additional city facilities and are looking at opportunities to increase renewable energy throughout the community. One of our ongoing priorities is working with partners to provide programs to help individual businesses and households be able to make those investments that ultimately will save them money and get the community closer to our efficiency goals. Some examples of the, of the partnerships we foster include some of these shown on the screen here for technical resources, education and support, and unique funding mechanisms. Beyond municipal facilities, the city has also adopted some standards in our building and zoning codes that promote a more sustainable built environment. The Enhanced Development Menu in the zoning code is one tool that we use to ensure large-scale developments, generally over twenty thousand square feet, minimize their impact on our energy and water resources, and have a positive impact in the community by contributing amenities such as bicycle facilities, public art, and EV charging. New developments select from nineteen menu options to earn the minimum required points for the size of the building. Since it was adopted in two thousand nineteen, we've had thirteen major site plans submitted using the EDM, and most of those projects will provide LED lighting, outdoor water conservation measures, and recycling and compost collection service that may not have otherwise been provided to those new residents. Now that the Enhanced Development Menu has been in effect for a couple of years, we're exploring updates to adjust the menu to keep it up to date and incentivizing and incentivizing the types of development we want to see while still offering flexibility to developers. And along with the EDM updates, we continue to make progress on a greenhouse gas mitigation program, which is what we've derived from the LAC's REMP proposal earlier this year to ensure that new development reflects the community's vision of sustainability and quality of life. And we're also looking at additional zoning code updates to be more effective, flexible and prepared for upcoming sustainable development trends. On the building code side of sustainable development standards, in addition to energy efficiency gains from the 2015 IBC Code adoptions, requirements for EV-ready parking, solar-ready rooftops and construction and demolition waste recycling were included among a couple of others. The pandemic has resulted in some challenges with compliance and enforcement of our construction and demolition ordinance, but we do continue to collaborate with our permit staff to find ways to improve compliance and are looking at other code updates to help give more teeth to the enforcement of that, of that standard. Despite these challenges, as you've heard from Christie as well, we saw some fantastic success with grassroots efforts to reduce waste in the community, ranging from neighbors sharing compost collection service through the Compost Buddies Program to huge turnout at special collection events like the Citywide Paint Recycling Event that was held in May in partnership with the Sustainable Neighborhood Network. These community events are a great way to bring people together for general mental wellness, to feel like they're part of something greater, especially during tough times like these last couple of years. In the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, community events go beyond the basics by also sharing knowledge, resources and partnerships that improve everyone's quality of life. The topics we've seen covered this year, as mentioned by Christie, included organics, hard-to-recycle waste, uh, water-efficient and pollinator-friendly gardening, home improvements, water and energy efficiency and utility cost savings to anti-racism discussion groups and supporting local businesses. So completely runs the gamut, which has been fantastic to see. One of the ways the community shared their grassroots effort was through the Safer and Sustainable at Home Virtual Workshop Series that we initiated in summer of 2020. These were community organized and community-led and attracted hundreds of total viewers. They're all available currently on Facebook and you can get those links from our website as well. So they're still available. Go check them out. Even with all those great grassroots efforts, we do still want to ensure we're improving the quality of life for all of our residents. And our sustainability team and staff from other departments went through the Urban Sustainability Director's Network's Equity Foundation Training in 2020. We wanted to understand what equity means and how it relates to our work since we've been tracking progress on several socioeconomic indicators over time that appear to be heading in the wrong direction, that we think might require some more targeted attention. For example, even before the economic impact of the pandemic was felt, the percentage of Lakewood households earning a living wage, which is the hourly wage necessary to meet a minimum standard of living, had declined by nine percentage points since 2010, moving us even farther away from our 2025 target. And while overall everyone fares worse than 10 years ago, groups who identify as Hispanic or Latino have been particularly hard-hit with less than a third of those households now earning a living wage. A related project that we participated in this year was the update to the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This was a multi-jurisdictional planning effort led by Jefferson County and a consultant to identify risks and vulnerabilities to natural and man-made hazards and identify actions that each participating jurisdiction can take to be prepared for future events. Major outcomes of this planning effort were the inclusion of future climate impacts to these hazards such as drought, extreme temperatures, flooding and wildfire, as well as the recommendation to further explore Lakewood's specific social vulnerabilities and an action strategy to develop an adaptation plan to ensure nobody gets left behind. Part of why we're so concerned with the living wage trend and the economic disparities between racial and ethnic groups is that when people are chronically stressed from the pressure of making ends meet, they're less able to adapt to new stressors in the face of hazards. Supplies in terms of not only financial means, but also the mental and emotional capacity to navigate the additional burden and potentially physical inability, either due to age, disability or lack of access to transportation. And that's what's known as social vulnerability. It's described in greater detail in the updated Hazard Mitigation Plan. The map here shows that the areas of the county with the highest vulnerability appear to be concentrated in northeast Lakewood and would like to find out why. Other areas that the Hazard Mitigation Plan addresses include nature-based solutions to hazards such as flooding. This is something the park staff already use, utilizes in their management approach, deploying techniques such as floating artificial islands that mimic natural conditions to improve water quality and maintain wildlife habitat. One priority strategy we've identified to promul- provide multiple benefits is increasing the tree canopy. The urban forest improves air and water quality, removes carbon from the atmosphere, provides shade to reduce building cooling requirements and protect people from sun exposure, reduces heat islands that increase the risk of heat-related illness, creates wildlife habitat and beautifies the city. So these stories I've shared are all examples of projects that we've worked on in the past year. And getting back to those numbers, you can see that we've made great progress over the last six years on moving the needle on these targets and implementation strategies that were adopted in the original Sustainability Plan. These successes represent work taking place not only in our division, but throughout the organization, the community and the region. And now I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan Watel to discuss the details as well as some key challenges, opportunities and upcoming priorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Nice job.
Thank you. I'm going to, um, take my turn and share my screen. Thank you, uh, thank you Caitlin, uh, Mayor City Council. I'm Jonathan Watel, the City of Lakewood Sustainability Manager. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the challenges and opportunities that are before us. As Caitlin went through a lot of the things we have accomplished, and I think in our packet, we included, uh, highlights from our, our past six years of, of work plan. To give you an idea of all the different, uh, efforts that we've taken on, we have made some progress and should be excited about some of this progress. We've seen our greenhouse gas emissions drop by more than 12% since our baseline. Uh, we've seen the percent of electricity that's generated from renewable sources increase by more than 20% since we started working on this. Uh, we've adopted more sustainable building codes and bonus standards, as Caitlin spoke quite a bit about. Uh, we've got all kinds of great community engagement programs. We've built a ton of, uh, infrastructure to communicate and get the word out and build partnerships across the organization and community. Um, and we've really done a lot internally to look at how we maintain our infrastructure, how we manage our plans, how we're making sure buildings and facilities are efficient and much, much more. Uh, so that's all great news. Um, but I think it's important to recognize that despite this progress, we still face, uh, really urgent challenges, uh, since the adoption of the plan. Um, as many of you know, uh, we continue to, uh, increase the amount of carbon dioxide that's in our atmosphere from historic averages. And as a result, we're seeing, uh, continued corresponding increase in our global average temperature. And, uh, we're now, uh, 2.1 degrees Fahrenheit warmer than historic average, uh, with 19 of our warmest years ever recorded taking place since 2000. And last year, 2020 tied 2016 for the warmest year on record. And when you think about that, two degrees might not sound a lot. Changes two degrees, um, in a few minutes here at sunset, right, as the sun goes down. But we're not talking about two degrees of temperature changes. Think about this two degrees more like the body temperature. That we've increased the body temperature of our planet of two degrees. And we're on pace to, uh, be significantly higher than that. What that would mean, uh, for a human to have a body temperature to continue to increase up with long enough to time. And so we're seeing this play out. I mean, uh, public health impacts, we've had quite the summers, uh, back-to-back here. Uh, with some increased heat-related impacts, uh, and health issues associated with that. Uh, we are seeing impacts in our forests, obviously increased frequency and severity of wildfires and corresponding impacts to soil health and our water quality. Uh, snowbank is reduced. We're, uh, you know, we're seeing significant levels of, um, of drought, um, increased risk of flooding. These are impacts that we're seeing on a regular basis here in Lakewood. And, uh, we know that according to the world scientific community, this is likely to get significantly worse if we don't make immediate drastic actions to reduce our emissions. Uh, and so we know that there's a lot of work to do. And as part of our global community, uh, working on reducing our emissions, we've, um, got a lot of expertise and data available to us to help us understand where we need to go and what our particular, uh, role is and what our obligations are. We're going to do our part. And so while we've reduced our greenhouse gas emissions by 12% below our 2007 levels, which is more than half of the way to our adopted 2020 target, the goalposts unfortunately have now been moved on us. If we're going to do our part here in Lakewood, uh, so our scientific-based targets put us, uh, you know, requires us to get closer to a 61% reduction below what we've already achieved. And that's significant. That means a real monumental challenge and monumental decarbonization in a pretty quick way. Uh, and so as we look at the two challenges here, how do we stop adding temperature to our planet? How do we make sure we understand what impacts we're going to face? And what that looks like here in Lakewood, how to prepare for it so we can be resilient and adaptable? That's the challenge that is before us. Um, and we can do this. Uh, we're not alone. Uh, everyone's in this together. And so we know we can do this and we have bold but thoughtful policies and programs and capital investments that, you know, follow this triple bottom line, uh, framework. Look at the economic impacts and make smarter economic decisions. Consider social equity, environmental justice and how we do this. And we can do that. Uh, and we've got a lot of examples around us to make sure we do this. And we know really the pathway to make a lot of this progress. We know that we can make rapid reductions in our emissions if we continue to focus on our transition to renewable energy sources. Uh, if we accelerate our investment in retrofitting and making our existing built environment more efficient. Uh, reducing the amount of fossil fuels, reducing the heat buildings. Uh, data that we've gotten shows that if we, in the next building code update, uh, require new buildings to use electricity instead of natural gas to heat, uh, heat those buildings and we just convert, you know, five or six percent of the existing building stock to using renewable energy instead of fossil fuels for heat, then we can save over 250,000 metric tons of carbon here in Lakewood. That would be 17% or more of that big, uh, number in front of us of what we need to be. I would need to also transition to fewer tailpipe emissions, increase our efficiency of our fleet that's out on the road, not just municipal fleet, but everyone's vehicles, transition to EVs as well, and minimize our waste-related emissions. And on the adaptation side, we need to understand all of our risks and threats and look for ways to really leverage our resources. And we have amazing parks and open spaces and natural resources in Lakewood that can help us sequester carbon, clean air. So we know what's in front of us. Uh, we're underway with a lot of this work already thanks to council's direction and community's support and expertise to help us figure this out. Uh, the Sustainable Development Codes, the work to convert municipal energy to renewables, uh, working on municipal community solar potential program, residential rooftop accelerator. These are all projects and programs we are, have our sleeves rolled up and we're trying to figure out and unveil and get moving so we can help with this important transition. And we anticipate another building code update in the next year, a year and a half. And that will be important as well to advance our goals. Uh, but in addition, we've got four budget proposals. And some of these would be through our division and others would be in collaboration. All of them would be in collaboration with possible organization, but, um, would particularly need help from, from other departments. Um, and we included those requests in your packet. And those are for your consideration as you go into the budget season and have all those hard decisions, uh, in front of you. And we don't take this lightly. We recognize the reality of, uh, the impacts of the pandemic and the tough decisions that council, uh, has to make every year with competing needs and, uh, but we want to put these in front of you because we think these are, uh, four proposals that in particular can really move the needle on implementing our plan and moving us towards, um, uh, decarbonization and additional benefits economically and socially. So the first that we outlined in your, in your packet was, uh, funding that would help us update our Sustainability Plan. It is six years old, um, but in particular, uh, focus on understanding that climate, the component of climate impact. So building on the hazard mitigation plan update, what will we experience here in Lakewood in terms of climate impacts? What does that mean for our infrastructure, for our social well-being, for our economics? Um, and really get into the meat. And so that's the first proposal. And that would include additional updates to the plan, updated gas emission, et cetera. Uh, our second request that was in the packet is funding, uh, to implement energy and water efficiency programs for the existing, uh, built environment. And this has proven, uh, across the country in almost every city to be one of the hardest nuts to crack, so to speak, when we look at trying to implement, uh, sustainability goals. It's really hard to get, you know, the existing built environment, um, invested, you know, the investments made and the improvements made to really see energy efficiency. Particularly in Lakewood, when we think about how much we've already built, uh, this is critical. And so we know the types of programs that are out there that have been successful in other communities, that have been successful on small, just small, at, at smaller scales here in Lakewood. And with, uh, additional funds, we could really, uh, ramp that up and make sure there's more opportunities. Uh, and we leverage a lot of existing rebates and programs that are out there. Think about the fact that if we can help buy down, uh, energy efficiency improvements in Lakewood resident homes and we provide matching dollars and they can leverage that with existing incentives and discounts from utilities, that we multiply that, that investment. And then that homeowner and that business owner, that commercial property owner can realize efficiency savings for the rest of the life of that building. So these are, um, home runs in terms of economics, quality of life of people that are in those buildings and truly using our, our resources. Uh, the third proposal is funds that we need to be able to leverage, match dollars already available from the state to expand our electric vehicle charging infrastructure. State has goals of getting close to a million EVs on the road. And it's coming fast and furious. You, many of you maybe already are eyeing one of those or maybe you have one. Uh, they're out there. Uh, we need the infrastructure. Uh, if we are able to, if we were to meet the state, if the state meets its goal or we see that shift in Lakewood, that would be almost one out of five cars on the road in electric vehicles by 2030. And that would save over 70,000 metric tons of carbon a year just right there. Um, but we need the infrastructure to make that happen and the support to do our part. So the, and there's, there's money out there from the state. We just need to match it. This is a great, another great opportunity to accelerate this transition. And finally, um, in concert with the Community Resources Department, uh, we're proposing money that would be used for residential tree canopy assistance, preservation of our existing tree canopy. We don't want to lose what we already have. We know there's significant threats from, from pests and particularly the emerald ashbore, um, and then also to help with planting new urban forests. And so, you know, how do we get more street trees? How do we, uh, help support preservation, maintenance of what we are? All of those projects really fit right in line with, with, uh, what the Sustainability Plan says already. Um, and with this urgent call to action, we really have globally, that we know that the clock is ticking and we're looking at, you know, two and a half to 3.7 degree temperature increases that are going to be significant economic, uh, habit on our, on our community. So the total funds requested is a little over a million dollars. That's less than a half a hundred percent, I believe, of the proposed budget. Um, and collectively, these will align directly with the adopted Sustainability Plans with all the council priorities in terms of the dashboard and areas that you directed us in the past. And we believe they'll provide lasting benefits to community members multiplying through partnerships and really accelerating our efforts. So we appreciate your continued support of the programs we do have and any additional support through these types of funding opportunities. Uh, we will leverage the best of our abilities and see what we can move ourselves forwards efficiently, thoughtfully, all that is possible. So with that, I will take questions. Thanks again for your call.
So Watel, thank you very much. Nice presentation. Nice food for thought as we begin the, the budget conversation starting next week. Um, and I, I think some of these ideas are also some spillover from last year, especially with the tree canopy and some presentations that we had about working hard to increase that. I'll say for myself, I also appreciate the, the attention to equity and equality, especially related to wages. I have some ideas on certainly why I think northeast part of Lakewood is challenged as it was, uh, for some time an affordable part of our community as Denver started to push people out that couldn't afford. And I think that could be a result, but I'd be really, uh, be really, um, anxious to learn more about that and, and really understand what has happened and what we can do. So council questions or comments? And, uh, again, not And uh, again, not necessarily the budget side, we'll be into that next month, but Jacob, go ahead and get us going.
I think Council Johnson uh, got it up first. If you want her to go first or she wants to go first.
Sure. Council Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I very much appreciate the very thoughtful presentation. I do have a few questions. Um, and one is in regard to the tree canopy. I know that I asked about this at another time. Is there any way that Lakewood can buy trees in bulk so that residents could purchase trees uh, at a more reasonable cost through the city? Has that ever, is that a possibility, Jonathan?
Uh, I think that would absolutely be part of the program. Caitlin, do you want to elaborate a little bit on some of the elements?
Sure.
If there's more details specific to any of those, you can see our.
Yeah. As we understand the kind of preliminary outline of the program right now, we'd be looking at spending, it'd be a two-part program with the per, first part focusing more on the Emerald Ash Bore and how to figure out how to preserve the existing tree canopy that we have, taking care of what we already have before it starts to become diseased. And then we can start uh, phase two, which is building upon the existing canopy that we have. And we definitely talked about providing some method of um, of lower subsidized trees for the community and looking at ways that we can target those areas of the city that have historically not had access to things like uh, to trees due to the expense that they are, since it's a pretty expensive thing to install a new tree and take care of it for a significant amount of time. But also looking at the areas where there's more need due to urban heat island and due to a lack of street trees that exist in the first place. So providing more shade to residents, not only will help with some of their health outcomes, just being able to provide shade and shelter during severe heat events, but also then provides greater cooling for buildings and reduces energy usage that way. So it'd be a two-part program, both on the maintenance side for what's existing and then the new tree program as well, which would also include more of the maintenance and education on how to take care of the trees that are installed.
So the bottom line is there is an opportunity to bulk purchase trees and pass that savings on down?
I don't believe the specifics on how we would do that part of the program are worked out quite yet, but yes, that's definitely something that's on the table.
Just mention, we did kind of like a small pilot of that during the fiftieth anniversary celebration. We um, we, we helped subsidize the buy down the cost and buy them in bulk. Uh, but we also learned a little bit from that and I think we also need to consider uh, making sure, you know, folks have uh, access to resources to help get those trees planted, to make sure they have irrigation. Maybe it's a, there's, there's steps involved. So all of that would be uh, ironed out into a cohesive program.
Thank you, Jonathan. That sounds like you put a lot of thought into this so that the trees live after they've been purchased and planted. Um, also, there's been a lot of discussion here about building codes and updating those zoning and building codes. Because of the price of homes, does anybody have any idea what this would cost? Or how it would affect the cost for the people that would be purchasing homes with a lot of these additional um, regulations, if you will, and changing the building codes and adding different things?
That is such an important question. So uh, it, it has to be a lens in which we look at any additional requirements or any shifts to what we have. And when we brought the enhanced development menu forward, uh, originally, we did really careful calculations on what this might look like for new developments in terms of the, the total, the percentage of the total valuation of the project. So um, any changes will go through a similar assessment in terms of is this, could this potentially increase the whole project by half of a percent? A quarter of a percent, more than that? Um, and what is, who, who's going to ultimately pay for it? And I think what's more important than just thinking about, does it increase the cost of the project? It's the result of the increased investment that's going into the building. So if it's a building that because of the new requirements, twenty or thirty percent more energy efficient, ultimately, the people who are living in those units are going to save that money, right, if they're paying the utility bill. So I think sometimes we need to parse out which part of the additional requirements are going to cause an upfront cost increase. Uh, what might just be on a luxury development and it's a very small percentage compared to the overall choices and, and uh, product that's being developed or if it could potentially have contributed to what we already know is a problem with our cost of living. I think that's where you can also build exceptions, um, up ramps for affordable housing. So I, it's critical. And I think hopefully as we bring anything forward, these are questions that we will be forced to make sure we are addressing.
Thank you, Jonathan, because even if there's a cost savings twenty years down the road, if you can't afford to live in it because of the increased cost, that I appreciate that you're looking at that. Um, and the last thing, um, it is a very lofty goal for the um, electric vehicles. And I understand the interest in that. I also understand the interest in increasing electric vehicle charging stations. Currently Lakewood has one at the city. The last that I looked, it was free to the people that were using it. And I would just like to say that basically that does come off of our Excel bill and all of the taxpayers are subsidizing the ability for a person to have an electric charge to get that free. I hope that at some point you'll be relooking at that so that people pay their own way when it comes to charging their electric vehicle. It should not be free by, or subsidized by everybody else.
All, all of the proposals for additional charging infrastructure include uh, charges that will recuperate, will recoup all electricity charging costs um, as part of the, as part of the goal.
So in other words, the user of that charging station will pay for the charge?
Correct. Those, those, what, yes. And more than that, um, it's important that we put in price structures that actually will trigger significant increases if someone's on the machine for too long because we need to make sure people don't park there all day. So um, the ideal structures will cover the cost of electricity and also create a financial um, hope that, you know, elbow to the ribs, it says it's time to move your car, someone else needs to go in there unless you want to pay a lot more money for the last part of the year.
Has there been any discussion to add a charge to the current station that we have?
There has, yes. And there had been a charge for a period of time. There were some upgrades done and some renewed contracts. And I think um, if the price didn't get reestablished, then that needs to happen. So thank you for reminding us that that hasn't happened.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Council Labir?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, yeah, I just wanted to thank uh, Jonathan. Appreciate the uh, presentation. Very exciting stuff. Thank you to your team as well and our city manager. Um, yeah, I just want to say I'm excited. I think uh, this is the kind of thing that the council's been talking about since I've been on it. Uh, wanting to hear uh, more things we could do, actionable items, budget requests, uh, that would help uh, you know, push our investments even further into making Lakewood even more sustainable. I know we've talked a lot about uh, benchmarking and data and tree canopies and stuff. So um, I'm excited to hear about some dollars for all those uh, different things. I think those are uh, great steps in the right direction. Obviously, uh, doing more multimodal and expanding um, you know, our infrastructure, obviously. I think that would be uh, another great step forward. And um, and I know you mentioned a little bit about procurement. Uh, I think that's an important piece. I think we spend something like two million dollars a year on gas. Uh, so obviously, you know, on fuel uh, consumption, something like that. So I think uh, obviously we're a big player in, in uh, purchasing energy in the community. And uh, obviously the more we could do to uh, reduce uh, waste and uh, conserve fuel and save money, I think would also be uh, a, a great step forward. So um, anyway, I just wanted to thank you. Uh, very exciting stuff. I'm looking forward to having more of these discussions. Thanks.
Council Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I, I too wanted to thank you guys for the presentation, certainly very thorough. And just to let you know, I got some experience in twenty twenty one with uh, Greeley's uh, water program and how they're encouraging um, uh, homeowners uh, to reduce the size of their watered landscape. And it was really interesting. They held workshops and uh, information that could, you could, sheets that you could have and also um, offered a small, I guess you could call incentive in order to uh, remove square footage of, of blondes. And so it was really an interesting program. I'm sure you're already aware of that, but just wanted to call attention to uh, people on the call that if we, even if we don't have something in place, a lot of times you can attend these from other municipalities uh, just to listen in and get a lot of good ideas about how to reduce your uh, amount of lawn that you have. And as most people know, I'm down to zero lawn at this point and a lot of flowers and, and continuing to move towards uh, reducing the amount of water that our household uses. And so thank you, Jonathan, and to you and your team.
Counselor. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Nicely done. Thank you for those updates and I'm sure we'll see you back in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is public comment. So before I go into the instructions, if you wish to speak, go ahead and press star nine right now. Get those hands up. Star nine if you wish to speak. Uh, this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of the city council meeting held in person in council chambers. Um, the clerk will call either the last four digits or your name. And uh, when you're brought on, um, please give us your name and address or name and ward. And uh, we'll get your three minutes started. When you have thirty seconds left, you'll hear this. And then when you are done, I will go ahead and give you that and ask you to politely wrap that up. Again, three minutes. And if you wish to speak for public comment, uh, please raise your hand now, star nine. If you're having issues, you're welcome to email me, A Paul, P A U L at Lakewood dot org. Mr. Clerk?
Last four of two, seven, six, two.
Evening, two, seven, six, two. Let me get my timer going here.
Am I good to go? Can everybody hear me?
You are good to go. We'll start your three minutes, your name and address or name and ward.
Well, thank you. My name is Curtis Nemeyer. I'm here in Ward Three at six eight one South Depew Street um, in Weir Gulch. And I'm here because of somebody put a sustainable neighborhood sign on my neighbor's lawn, which is awesome. Um, so I decided I'd call in to kind of um, say hey to everybody and just kind of give my two cents here. Um, I just want to start off Councilman Johnson. I think that tree idea is fantastic. Uh, trees make every street so much better. Um, especially with a lot of our big roads having clear zones with no streets or no trees in them, which makes it very hot, especially on Alameda. Um, so I just want to commend you for that. That's a fantastic idea. I love it. Um, and then what I really want to talk about is with the increase in vehicle traffic around the area, um, I've been looking around at getting away, getting around in as many different ways as possible without using a car. Um, so I've been trying to bicycle to do my daily errands, especially since I kind of live a little bit around Belmar. Um, so I've been trying to use my bicycle, which has been fantastic for my wallet, for my health. Um, in living in Ward Three, I find it really easy to get around to Ward Two and to a little or lesser extent, Ward Five. Um, however, crossing Sixth Avenue, I always find difficulty to cross Sixth Avenue. And I've just been thinking, um, it would be a very useful and I think very financially productive asset. Um, just to kind of look into if there was a safe pedestrian or bicycle crossing on Sixth Street of some form. Um, whether that be, I don't know if it's a tunnel or a bridge or something, just, just to make it a little safer for myself and the kids in the neighborhood to be able to cross to go to the north part of Lakewood, um, without being in a dangerous situation. Um, I think it greatly increases the mobility of the southern wards, especially at Belmar, to get to the light rail line. Um, and I would love to use the light rail line more if I had a safer option to get to there. Um, just something to consider to keep the sustainability pace that would be, I think would be an awesome asset to our city. Um, and also selfishly, if I had a more safe crossing, I'd be able to get rid of an entire car and only have to have one, which one less street for, one less car in the street for everybody to pay for. Uh, which I'm trying to be a good neighbor and keep my car off the road as much as possible. Um, and I also know I have a brother up in Ward Two that was right on the other side of Sixth Street that I can't get to easily. Um, and he would love to get rid of the car too, if he had the option to. So if something like that's possible, I'd love to help out painting or landscaping, something like that. Um, I'd even be willing to contribute the first few hundred dollars or you guys can have my car or something to pay for, something like that. Just, it would be so awesome to have something to be able to cross Sixth Ave so easily. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thank you. We'll, we'll circle back after public comment and you can kind of give an update on that. Mr. Clerk next?
Four, three, seven, five.
All right. Four, three, seven, five. Give us your name and address, name and ward. We'll get you going. Four, three, seven, five. You are on.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that. It was on mute. I'm sorry. Um, hi, my name is Tess Darty and I am a, an advocate for our unhoused neighbors. Um, and I'm just uh, wondering how Lakewood is working with other municipalities. Um, it's become apparent, you know, throughout the Denver metro area that um, people experiencing homelessness are being traumatized and pushed around and um, and having their, their human and civil rights violated regularly. Um, it's also become apparent that um, there has not been a fairly coordinated effort between um, leaders and elected officials and government uh, at, between, you know, in different municipalities. And so it seems like the time is long passed overdue that kind of, you know, uh, the leaders in Denver and Lakewood and uh, the entire Denver metro area kind of come together to come up with a coordinated plan. Um, because there are some service providers who are quite frankly, uh, profiteering off poverty. And so I'm concerned that, you know, some of the conditions that are being offered as housing are in fact, um, inhumane and unlivable. And we're asking people to get off the street, get out of the tents and move into these conditions that um, that none of us would want to live in. In fact, um, they're harming people's health. There's black mold in some of the, some of the places that are offered by the Color Coalition for the Homeless in Lakewood um, that is impacting people's health and it's not being taken seriously by the service providers. And so I would just, um, rather than policing and, and criminalizing people experiencing homelessness, why don't we address these service providers who are profiteering and who are squandering our tax dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk next, please. And again, if you're in the queue, this is general public comment. Star nine to raise your hand.
Yes, it looks like Celia Greenman.
See, uh, good evening. We'll get you started. We'll get your name and address or name and ward. Celia, you are up. Unmute star six, please. See there, we see you. You're in the meeting. If you press star six, you can unmute. Okay. Keep your hand up and we will come back to you. Mr. Clerk next?
Uh, last four is nine, 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 nine.
All right. Nine, 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 nine. Give us your name and address or name and ward. I'll get you going.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Keefe. I live in Ward Five.
Good evening.
I wanted to uh, thank Jonathan for his amazing presentation and his staff's presentation. Uh, I wanted to uh, commend Counselor Johnson for her questions about the charging stations. Um, I'd, I'd like to flip the script, um, and I'd like to point out that we could also, instead of charging for those charging stations, uh, with the initiatives in terms of so, solar energy, those uh, stations could pay for themselves and it could incentivize people to be using uh, greener energy. Uh, I also wanted to, to speak to another question that was asked about the cost of the tree canopy. Um, there is a study that was done in Warwick, uh, Rhode Island, a city of eighty eight thousand. They have done three tranic, tree canopy projects over the cost of uh, about, or the time of about twelve years to a zero sum to the city budget. They used uh, grants. In particular, most recently in twenty eighteen, a fifteen thousand dollar grant, ten thousand were used for trees, zero cost to the city, zero cost to residents. Uh, ten thousand went to the procurement of the trees themselves. Uh, ten thousand went to the procurement of the trees themselves. Five thousand went to setbacks to make sure, as was alluded to earlier, that the trees would be healthy and, and live to adulthood. And so I just wanted to thank uh, the council for their interest in this important issue. And with that, I'll yield back my time.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder, this is general public comment, so please raise your hand star nine if you wish to speak. If you were called on and um, you weren't able to, we will certainly circle back. Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Yes, Joshua Comden.
Evening, Mr. Comden. Name and address, name and ward. We'll get you going.
Yeah, hello. My name is Joshua Comden, Ward one. And yeah, I, I thought those presentations were very nice. They should come on every week. I would love that, but I know they have updates like that every week. I was um, I also want to thank the mayor. I think last meeting you mentioned that you looked into uh, civilian review boards. Looking at uh, how New York does it. And so I want to thank you for looking into that and I hope you keep us updated on, on what you find out and what, what's going on with that, because I think that, that's very nice. Um, and also uh, maybe uh, council person, uh, Bida. Uh, your campaign literature is a little bit hyperbolic with the uh, police saying that the police are being handcuffed. Um, I don't think they're handcuffed, but a little bit hyperbolic, so uh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk next.
Zero, two, five, six.
Good evening, zero, two, five, six, star six to unmute. Give us your name, address, name, ward. We'll get you going.
My name's the mayor.
Yep, you're on.
Let's see, um. Yeah, I like, I like the idea of a sustainable city. Um, I think that we really need to uh, you know, when you're talking about the safety of a city, you have to make sure that you're ensuring that all the citizens are safe, not just a certain select few. Um, so uh, I'm really curious to hear more about what's gone on with the diversity training that you guys have. Um, and if the city council has gone through any, because I feel like that would be uh, something beneficial for you guys. So that you can learn more about what people are actually wanting and needing. Um, along with the trees, I think it would probably be a good idea to uh, get people to sign up for the trees before you go and buy a bunch of trees and then plant them all in the same area. Because it's always a good idea to get things for people or set things up for people. But if people don't know that things are being set up, then how are they ever going to get them? So it's kind of like, you almost need to have a, uh, an awareness campaign to alert, to alert people that you're doing these things, because otherwise you do things and no one knows. Um, I also am curious about the uh, the citizen accountability committee, the diverse citizen community committee that was supposed to happen. I don't know if that ever happened. Uh, seems like no one has, is really that interested in getting I feel like people are, are saying things, but not putting things in the motion to get, to make it happen. So once again, you have to make people aware so that they can get involved. Because otherwise, you've just uh, you know, pontificated in city council and batted things around and you feel good about it, but nothing's actually happening. Um, I like the idea that the, the lady said before, to find out how the cities in the metro Denver area can connect on the, the things that are affecting all of us. Because, you know, once again, you come up with great ideas and doing good things for people. But if there isn't any follow-up on the accountability of the people who are enacting these so-called programs, then we're literally just passing our tax dollars around to people who are taking them and walking away with it and not doing the things that are actually needed and required by the people that live here.
Wrap up your comments. We appreciate it. And if you give us your name and address or name and ward, we didn't get that.
Yeah, it's the mayor in Ward two.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next, please.
We'll try Celia Greenman again.
All right, Celia. If you hit star six to unmute, we'll get you going. Ms. Greenman, you are in the queue, star six to unmute. Okay, next, Mr. Clerk.
Last four of three, eight, two, one.
Three, eight, two, one. Good evening, star six. Give us your name and address or name and ward. We'll get you going.
Hi, uh, this is Celia uh, agreement with Ward two, and I've got a question on the tree canopy. Maybe this was covered before, but uh, I was wondering if there's uh, some kind of incentive for developers to maintain trees, mature trees when they're developing a site. Could you uh, speak to that? Someone speak to that?
Sure. So we'll, we'll come back after public comment. And if we don't have that answer, uh, if you just send an email, A Paul, P A U L at Lakewood.org, I can get you set up with the right folks to get you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
John Claus.
Mr. Claus, all right. Name and address. We have name. Ward, please.
Good evening, council. Hey, everybody. This is John Claus, Ward one, calling in again. I'm sorry about you all. Uh, just still waiting for a public comment from Charlie about the fact that he's dating someone who's running for city council, the fact that uh, he and his girlfriend both run on transparency, but he neglected to mention that he was on the screening committee for her joining the, the uh, planning commission. He was the deciding vote. Shake your head, Charlie. I, I looked it all up. It's public information. I guess he's been busy growing out that cool man bun, but uh, I promise I will stop calling in as soon as these transparent leaders uh, start chiming in. So you're scum bag, Charlie. Thanks a lot, everyone else.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, before we go to the next one, I know Ms. Herkovich has been trying to get in. I see her pop up and out. So she's
Yeah, I got her right here. I was, I was gonna bring her on.
All right, perfect. Thanks.
Well, it looks like she disappeared.
Yeah, she did. She's come on like two or three times.
I know she's been on her iPad and
And then has popped off. So we do have a, a hand up that has not been called on.
Uh, says mahogany.
All right, all right. Caller with the name mahogany, if you'd give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll start you three minutes.
Uh, good evening. I'm in Ward three, I believe, in the Belmar. I would love to give my name, but I'm so definitely afraid. Um, the reason being, I got my ass handed to me by the Lakewood police. I was pulled through my window. I was just endorsed. I'm wondering what are we going to do about race suit injustice at the Lakewood department, the city, the people? What are we going to do about the DAs who retaliate against people who need uh, SNAP assistance for being beat up, for having their, their death states, for exercising their constitutional rights? What are we going to do about that? How are we going to handle these officers who have had uh, excessive force cases, murder cases against them, but they keep being promoted to internal affairs, they're getting promoted to uh, uh, court marshals and stuff like that? What are you going to do about that, Mayor? And everybody else on this, this board? What are we going to do about that? How are we going to fix that?
Okay, thank you. Anything else like that?
No, but you, you'll be hearing my story pretty soon. Just mayor, just uh, yeah, keep your eye out. You'll be hearing it.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wish to speak who hasn't had a chance?
Yeah, Mayor, I have Lenore.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, very difficult to get through tonight. Um, I, uh, Lenore Herskowitz, Ward one. Uh, I'm going to be speaking on a totally different subject tonight, um, other than the, the presentations. Uh, it seems that the city is a party to a lot of lawsuits, one which I believe you recently lost on appeal. These lawsuits or even the potential threat of one involves a cloak of secrecy pertaining to any information related to the case. Now, a judge can issue a gag order and prohibit the parties from speaking about a case, but the public can be told if such an order is in place. Then there's attorney-client privilege, which is all often given as a reason for not providing any information to the community. However, this does not cover anything, everything. For example, a complaint and the answer to a lawsuit is public information, as are motions for temporary restraining orders and orders from the court. The city attorney's office could and should provide these documents to city counselors, especially if their particular ward is somehow affected by the lawsuit. Our representatives should then be able to provide that information to interested constituents. This only pertains to documents that are part of the public record, so there's no violation of attorney-client privilege. The ability to share this information would save citizens a lot of time when researching cases in which they are stakeholders and allow our city counselors to keep their constituents informed. There are frequently complaints about lack of transparency and accountability in our city government. When an ordinance isn't enforced or a judge's order is ignored or a vote of the people circumvented, no one seems to take responsibility. The generic answer is staff decided. Specifically, who on staff decided? And is it in their job description to do so on their own? Our city's website, uh, on our city we- website is, it states that the responsibilities dealt dedicating to the city manager's office include implementing city council's direction, respond to residents' requests, and ensure open communication with residents. Open communication would imply answers about policy decisions, not excuses for suppression of information. Thank you very much, and I'm glad I could finally get through. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for general public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close that. I thank everybody for weighing in. A lot of great questions. I'll just try to get answers to ones that I have. Uh, yes, crossing Sixth Avenue on a bicycle is very challenging. Our only north-south route truly is garrison. I guess you could count Union and Sims also, but uh, Sixth and Wads is a, a key priority for the city, has been for a long time. Uh, we've been in the queue. In fact, a letter just recently went to CDOT, uh, making them re-aware that that's one of our key, in fact, our, our main infrastructure project. When that is done, that will create a new north-south, but we know that, we know we lack that, especially in the bicycle plan. So thank you. Continue to advocate, maybe reach out to CDOT as well. I love this question about coordination and homelessness. We do a lot of coordination. In fact, every city in Jefferson County is working hard through our navigation programs, through our community action teams. And in fact, uh, the county commissioners breakfast uh, two weeks ago or last week, which all councils invited to, did a great update on where we're at with that and looking at different navigation centers. We also work with the city of Denver Metro Mayor's caucus. This has been one of the, the largest kind of efforts that we've done, has thirty-eight different cities trying to figure out. And then the Caro Municipal League also is part of different discussions related to homelessness. So that is one area, uh, we are really trying to coordinate, and it is a, a tough one. Diversity Committee was approved a couple of weeks ago, and in fact, we also got an update. Jefferson County is doing an incredible uh, a program with their diversion and inclusion uh, diversity committee that our folks hopefully are going to engage with and uh, see where that goes. So that is also in, in the go. There's a question about tree canopy, and I was told that uh, trees above a certain size on a site either need to be maintained, or if they can't be, they will be replaced. And then lastly, we certainly take all allegations of police misconduct seriously. And uh, it's a very important us to have those investigated and taken care of. And I know that some folks feel like this is a little bit of a game, and it's not. It is very serious and we do take that seriously. So thank you. And you're always welcome to reach out to myself or anybody else on this council if you'd like to discuss that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hodson for our report.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, Mayor, just a quick little point of clarification. Um, those, um, that information about existing trees of a certain size on a site must be maintained or replaced. That's in response to the question about the developers' responsibilities um, as it relates to the tree canopy. So just to add that piece to that information. And, and, thank you. And I have a couple of updates. One is, uh, congratulations to our fleet manager and all of the fleet staff. Our fleet manager is Ramon Montoya, in a recently received the Blue Seal of Excellence recognition, once again, um, by the, by, with the standards established by the National Institute for Automotive Service Excellence. We don't often talk about our fleet maintenance folks, but they do an amazing job of all of the fleet um, in the community. Think about parks and the streets vehicles and certainly our, our police department. So congratulations to Ramon and his staff for once again, um, being awarded the Blue Seal of Excellence. Not to be a nag, but I will. This um, Thursday, September sixteenth, is the twenty twenty-one West Metro Veterans Fair. It's from eleven to two at the Lakewood Elks Lodge, fourteen fifty-five Newland Street. Um, this is a very special fair, and you will see men and women who've served in all of the various branches of our military, and it's, it's actually a really special event. So you're invited and welcome and encouraged to attend. It's the West Metro Veterans Fair, September sixteenth, which is this Thursday, from eleven to do, eleven to two at the Lakewood's Elks, Lakewood Elks Lodge. And finally, I'm sure Counselor Bida will remind you of this, but I'm gonna um, do it first and then he'll probably um, remind you again. We have a budget not at board meeting on the fifteenth, which is Wednesday evening. And it'll be the first review of the budget for the whole board and all of council is welcome to attend. And I believe that that meeting is at five thirty. I'm going to check real quick. Yeah, it is at five thirty and it's held virtually. So the budget not at board meeting this Wednesday, the fifteenth at five thirty, everyone's invited. And so with that, Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodson. And I would just like to, to relay one thing on behalf of the council and the community. You are celebrating your twelfth anniversary tomorrow as our city manager. So want to thank you for your years of dedicated service, not only uh, as city manager, but certainly prior. And you are a true woman of great leadership. Still a rarity in city management, as not many females are city managers. So we are proud of you. And thank you for those uh, last twelve years.
Thank you.
Okay. So next up, we have the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made a expedite council action. It contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the community will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have an opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the dates set tonight by city council. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. As a reminder, the Alameda uh, corridor business improvement district operating plan has been removed. That's twenty twenty-one dash forty-three. So I'll ask the clerk to please read into the record the consent agenda minus item eight.
So item nine is resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-four approving the twenty twenty- approving the twenty-twenty-two operating plan and proposed budget for the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District. Item ten is ordinance oh dash twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five creating chapter fourteen point two-eight of the City of Lakewood, Colorado Municipal Code Regulating Metropolitan Districts. Item eleven is approving minutes of city council meeting, and item twelve is accepting minutes of the boards and commissions.
Great, thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on the particular resolution, which is twenty-twenty-one dash forty-four approving the twenty-twenty operating plan for Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District. Does anybody wish to comment on that item, resolution twenty-twenty-one dash forty-four? Please raise your hand with a star nine. Okay, I'll now close public comment on the consent agenda and uh ask Mayor Protem if he can get through to make a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move.
We lost you. And you came back.
I will begin again.
Thank you.
I move for the approval of city council minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions, and order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance and for the adoption of resolutions, except for item eight, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Hey, motion of second. Any discussion, council, or questions? All right, seeing none, please cast your vote on the consent agenda. That passes, looks like ten ayes and zero nays. Right, general business. I don't have anything under general business. Take us into mayor and city council reports. Counselor Harrison, since you're a single, you wanna start first, and we'll go five and down.
Whoops. Okay, um, yeah, the um our regular October meeting, October second, will be a candidate forum, and Ward five will actually have four candidates uh running for two seats, one that will be replacing me for a four-year period, and a second seat that will take the remainder of uh Counselor Gutwin's term. Uh, so it'll be a very important meeting. It'll be held nine AM, October second, at the Westwoods Community Church, and we'd hope that everyone could be there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ward four, Mayor Protem, Counselor Franks.
No report.
No report.
Okay. Ward three, Counselor Springsteen, Counselor Bida.
You want me to go first?
Yeah, you go ahead first.
Well, I don't really have any report uh related to the to our Ward three, however, just again to remind everybody of our budget audit uh meeting on Wednesday, five thirty. Um, that'll be a presentation by staff. That'll be our first uh look at our complete look at our budget. So, you know, we only have about not even two months to complete the budget process. So it's really important to try to get on top of this. And uh, so that'll be a good time to get started. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to report on a couple. We've been away for a while, so a couple interesting things uh that have come up in the news. Uh the the historic decision for the Colorado Attorney General uh to announce that a grand jury indicted uh three police officers and two paramedics who murdered Elijah McLean, murdered him. Um, this is a huge leap forward for justice. Uh, I was actually quoted in the Denver Post last week as saying that there should be many more indictments across the state, uh particularly as ketamine was identified as a deadly weapon that has been used, I would point out, at ten times the rate of Aurora here in Jefferson County. Murder is never okay, no matter who's doing it. And um I I just think this is a historic, historic decision. I think it's wonderful. Um, also, I wanted to point out a story that was in the news about uh a Latina councilwoman, Candy Cedebacka, and her chief of staff, Lisa Calderon, uh who is black, who were accused of reverse racism in Denver. And Ms. Calderon wrote a wonderful op-ed in the Westward um talking about how upsetting the accusation was, how misogynistic it was, and how it played into the conservative narrative of false equivalence. Um, it really struck me how much our own uh city establishment treats women of color electeds. And uh and how there seems to be this sort of weaponization of pitting people against each other in this city. That is so sad, so sad. Pitting pe- people of color against each other. It's 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 amazing. Um. Finally, uh just for all you parents out there. Uh, so my kids were remote for a long ti- uh long time, but um now one is back in school, and and so I'm seeing the emails come through about you know, when somebody in the vicinity of your child tests positive for for COVID. Um, but but the communications are very vague. And so I called my child's teacher, my child's school nurse, the district nurse. I wanted to know more. I wanted to know was it in my child's classroom? Where was it? Where was where was the positive? And what I found out is, nobody will tell. And I think it's ironic when we have uh our president asking for um mandated vaccines, and we have no transparency within our own schools here in Jefferson County. And I dug into it a little deeper, and what I found out is um the the Jefferson County Department of Health has taken over informing parents about uh any kind of exposure to COVID as the Delta variant becomes more prominent. And the problem with that, I was told, is that Jeffco Department of Health has only seven nurses on this, whereas the school district had about eighty nurses. But now they're not allowed to weigh in on this. And I don't know about you, but I find this to be a big problem. And this is specific to our county, I found out. There are no other counties doing it this way. And so I would implore all of you parents out there. Keep your children safe, ask questions, ask why the hell we can't know if a child in our own child's classroom tested positive for COVID. And our child can come home and potentially give COVID to grandparents or parents or young children. That is not acceptable. We we need to do better. We need to do better than that. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Ward two.
Do you want me to go first, Jacob? Okay, um. Well, Hi-Two was quoted in the Denver Post last week and was not amused because there was some out-of-context things, and that was is that we were going back to the drawing board totally on STRs, and that's not the case. Um, we had, when we had all those amendments last time, we had decided that we were gonna look and review those instead of going through them one by one on the council. Um, so I will be sending out, or somebody will be sending out a doodle pad to try to have another meeting sometime um in October. So I would appreciate it if everybody could get back to me as quickly as possible so we can get this moving again. Um, the other thing is is we are having a Ward two candidate forum on the twenty-first at the Benchmark Theater, which is on Sixteenth and Teller. And it will be from five fifteen, five thirty to six forty-five. And we do have to wrap it up right at six forty-five, um just as a heads up, because the theater was nice enough to let us go ahead and use that, because they're getting ready to go um to start producing again, and they're gonna have a production up and running. So that's good news for Colfax. Also, in Westward, there was a wonderful article about Casa Bonita. Yep, and somebody said that they jump off of a diving board into the pool when it opened, and that person shall remain nameless, Mr. Mayor. So it was a great article. If you go in there, there was a lot of good information about what's happening on Colfax. So that's all I have.
Counselor, there you are. I lost you. You're on.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. All right, Ward one, take us home. Counselor Johnson able?
Charlie, did you wanna go first?
Sure, uh mine's short and brief, and uh a pleasure. Uh, Iberhood folks uh held their annual get-together at Richie Park uh last week, and uh it was great seeing everyone. Um, good to see the horseshoe pits uh being used, the uh informally named Gerald Lopez uh Memorial Horseshoe Pits. But uh it was great seeing everybody and nice to see folks getting out in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would just like to say sometimes public policy gets a little bit complicated, and it's not as easy in black and white as it may seem. I know that there is a great deal of interest in alternative modes of mobility, and I truly understand that. But we also need to keep in mind that our population in Lakewood is aging, and we do have many seniors. And for them, they will be needing their autos to get to their medical appointments and to get around. So you know, there's always a balance in everything that we do. And as good as alternate modes of mobility are, there are still some people that will need their autos. And uh, thank you. That's it.
Great, thank you. So it has been a couple of weeks, so bear with me. Uh, the Housing Committee through the state of Colorado, that is uh among the Subcommittee for Affordable Housing, looking at how best to distribute the five hundred million dollars and and working with our housing authority and really trying to see how do we affect those most in need and those most on the margins. Um, so learning a lot there, did a Habitat for Humanity build, and um, you know, certainly know that homeownership is so important. So um, learning there, hope to see some stuff come forward in the next few months, and certainly, you know, it's makes me cognizant of our own housing policies in our own community and what those do to either promote or discourage. And and so it's gonna be a challenge moving forward. Lot of excitement on West Colfax. I think more things to come, but certainly the the news about Casa Bonita i- is re- reassuring, and then the White Swan has been in the news a couple of times. And that's a really cool deal with what uh Lauren Richardson is doing and and really turning that and cleaning it up. It's gonna be homeless and uh short-term sheltering for for the time being until she can build out that dream of what she has. And holy moly, if you haven't had a chance, if you think you know Colfax, which I certainly thought I knew Colfax from spending a lot of time, go walk in a room before they're all kind of cleaned up at the White Swan, and it will give you a whole different flavor of what sadly some of our folks, including kids, are living in 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 our community. The Cottage Park dedication, might have talked about this, Hundred and Eleventh Park, beautifully done, really cool. So thank you to the city staff for doing that. Budget books are out, big meeting coming up. Please, if you have any questions, clarifications, take the time to reach out to uh either the department head or Ms. Bjorkland or Ms. Hodgson with any of those questions moving forward. Also, part of that in our development dialogue, folks know this all too well. You've spent a lot of time on metro districts, a lot of meetings, a lot of complicated things that are part of this. Mr. Hutchison is a great resource, and if you have any questions moving into our second reading, please reach out to Mr. Hutchison. Please, uh, let's try to facilitate all those ahead of time and and make for a good uh discussion and conversation. Was great to see the Colfax article. Um, new ownership at Belmar, which is fantastic. Those folks really starting to engage and look at what could be kind of in the next phase. So a lot of great things, still a lot of hurt and concern, and I don't know if you saw, but the mobile vaccination clinics have uh had to make sure that now they have security in order for them to be out in the community. We we need to do better, and uh let's all try to do our best. It also goes with, I think we've all seen an increase, if not emails or calls, but trash in our community. And uh it's it's a conundrum, but it it's a lot. There's a lot of trash in our community, and and I don't know if, you know, maybe that's a conversation for the retreat. But if people have any ideas on on unique things that we can do as neighborhoods to help with that, that goes a long way. And lastly, in closing, it is upsetting and and certainly hurtful when folks are called racists or misogynists, and it's certainly not warranted. And uh, you know, we talk about kindness and healing on this council. It's a good place to start, and making false accusations or just those types of bold accusations is super damaging. So many on this on this call have been part of that or felt that. So I I would agree, it is upsetting, and it's not kind. So I'd encourage us all to do better. So with that, I will shut her down at eight forty-two PM, and we will see you all next week at seven. Thank you.